I was sick last week.
Six o'clock. Can you start recording?
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting for August 1st, 2024. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we are recording on via Zoom. Our cable guys are recording as well for the Channel 6. Where's the Channel 12?
12.
12?
Fifth.
No, it's 6. I'm right now.
You were right.
And they are also recording to go live on Facebook and also gonna have a copy on YouTube on their channel. If anybody would like to record, just let us know so we let everybody know. When you come, if you wanna, if you, if it's your turn to speak, please come in front and say your name and if you're a resident of Warren and why are you here for. Anything else to announce? We're good? Let's start. So first, we have a First Right of Refusal for the land located on Brimfield Road found on the Assessor's map 11 parcel 40 and 39 recorded in Wister Registry of Deeds in Boot 51276. P A E 317 parcel 11040, anticipatable. Any information on this?
Just what's in your packet. Karen, do we get anything else?
No, just that these people apparently have been trying to sell this for quite a while and they contacted the assessors and the assessor says we don't have a First Right of Refusal from the Select Board.
Where exactly is this property?
Yeah, where is it?
Can you pull that up, Rich?
Yeah. Brimfield Road. Is the internet still?
They search by name.
What is it? 11039?
Forty and thirty-nine.
Is it forty?
Forty and thirty-nine.
I can share my screen. There we go.
Found it?
So it's this, these two.
Yeah. Could you zoom out a little bit?
Uh, I think I can.
So that's south from here?
Yep.
It's almost to the brim of the line.
Oh, I see where it is.
Yeah, there's that triangle here.
So the solar array is on 52 and 54? Up?
Like over here? Um, yeah.
Is that the, are those the?
Yeah, probably. Yep. Renewables landholdings. This is the gravel pit that um permitted, remember that?
No, I'm not. Forty percent, or is it? So it's Brimfield Road, right?
Yeah.
Could we zoom in else? Can you zoom out a little bit more?
Yeah.
Do we have a property owner? Is the property owner here?
No.
No.
I mean, the only reason we wouldn't do this is if we want, if the town would buy it, right? We're not gonna buy this.
Yeah, we're not gonna. It's not. How big is it? Do you click on it?
Number forty is five point nine, five point zero nine acres and number thirty-nine is six point four two acres.
That's big. Almost twelve acres total. Oh, what did I say? Jimmy, do we, do we have any feedback?
Um, I, I don't know of any, you know, particular use that any department would have for this particular parcel, being as it's so close to the, you know, the town border. I, I could certainly, you know, send out a, a, an email to all the departments to see if there's any need for it, but I, I can't imagine.
We have like a hundred and twenty days to make a decision or a hundred and eighty?
Uh, I don't think that there's a time period.
Oh, I thought there was a limit.
I mean, this was done back in March, I believe, right? The request was made in March, right?
Oh, I don't know. This says June 28th.
June twenty, um, June 28th.
June 28th.
It was dated. What she sent me was June 28th.
Oh, no, March 19th.
Yeah, it was handed to the assessors then.
Yeah.
Went to the assessors, March 19th.
Yeah, and the assessors didn't understand why and why they were giving them this money without the First Right of Refusal. So they were very confused about all of this. So they said the first thing we needed to do is get the First Right of Refusal, then the assessors would handle the money issues.
So they would give them, who was giving them money?
The, the, the owners gave the assessors. That's with the hundred and five and the fifteen dollars.
But it's made out to the registry of deeds. Why would they give that to the assessor?
No, I'm sorry. The, just the fifteen.
Fifteen dollars. Must be some fee that they charge.
I mean, in the past, we walked one of those sites as a planning board inspection.
Now, these are typical, unless the town has a specific interest in it, that we have a value, that we're gonna use it for something.
Yeah.
We, we can, we have the right to, you know, first bite at the apple on this. But with something like this, it's not in an area where we would need it.
Yeah.
It's not on the radar for any future product, projects, so.
Okay.
So.
You, are you good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so let's make a motion and get it.
All right. I'll make a motion to not exercise our, the town's right of First Refusal.
Three.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufran, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved or denied? How do you say that?
It's approved.
The, the motion is approved.
Yes.
Yeah, to not exercise.
We're not exercising. Number two, contract amendment number three between Town of Warren and Central Massachusetts Community Development Fund Program and Administration Services, anticipatable.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is a, a simple request from CMRPC who administers our CDBG fund program. They are seeking a, a short period of extension from the original cutoff date of June 30th, 2024 to September 30th, 2024 on the time of performance request.
Guess we're okay with that. I'm okay.
Is it for a, a specific project?
Uh, for, for the CDBG stuff that they're working on for fiscal year 2021 with regards to the School Street project.
You good?
Yep.
Make a motion, please?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Contract Amendment number three between the Town of Warren and Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufran, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Do we need to sign this?
Sign please.
This one? Okay. Number three, schedule a change order, number one, for School Street Phase Two and Otis Street Improvement Project, anticipatable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, this is a, uh, one of the change orders that was talked about in the Phase Two for the Otis Street and School Street Improvement Project. This particular, um, change order, number one, is for segmental block retaining wall at 28 School Street. Install red mount, uh, red rocks, uh, segmental block retaining wall with cornerstone, with cobblestone finish on all exposed sides to replace the failing stone wall. Install four-foot-high black vinyl coated chain link fence to see the attached drawings. The work shall include all labor materials. Remove and delivery existing all wall stones to the highway garage. Proper disposal of all excess materials and necessary equipment, materials and any other associated work. This change order is estimated at thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. The designs are attached. Moving forward.
This is the same type of wall that's already there, right?
Well, yeah, well, the, much, much newer and, and better, yeah.
No, 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 but I mean the one that, that they installed recently.
Right.
It's the same, yeah.
I will, I will mention to the board that the project is running under budget, so we don't anticipate this changing any of the parameters of the project in its entirety.
It's just about a four-foot wall. Yeah, it's in the brain. I think it's good. The plans are clear.
I'm good with it. Yeah, me too.
You're good?
Yep.
We need a motion.
You want me to motion?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the Schedule A change. Is that the one? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Schedule A, A Change Order Number One for School Street Phase Two and Otis Street Improvement Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye. Motion approved. Number four, we have another order.
Owner. You've just bought yourself a nice wall and fence?
Yeah. Hope it holds the, the dirt on the other side. Number four, Schedule A Change Order Number Two for School Street Phase Two and Otis Street Improvement Project, anticipatable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a Change Order Number Two for the same project. This is a six thousand dollar total change order. Item in number A that's gonna be addressed is the catch basin grates. This is gonna install cascade-style catch basin grates in lieu of the standard grates. So it is going to provide a, a, a nicer look to the, to the, to the grates. The work shall include all labor, materials, equipment and any other associated work. That total cost is twenty-one hundred dollars. And then item B within the same change order is remove the reset stone curbing. Remove and reset additional stone curbing in the location as directed approximately sixty-five feet. Utilizing stone curbing removed from the eastern side of the road. The work shall include all labor, materials, equipment and any associated work. This estimated change order is thirty-nine hundred dollars. I will also comment that this was talked about during our site walk and has been discussed with our highway surveyor as well.
So what are cascade-style catch basins?
There are different style of cat, the catch basins that have a little bit more appeal to the curb than, than the regular catch basins. That's what it was described to me. And will look better with the monolithic sidewalk that has been put in place.
Okay.
Flow better.
You have somebody ask a question?
Yes, sir?
Javier Melendez at 24 Otis Street. So with regards to the catch basins, and I was kinda curious, is this regarding Otis Street? Because I don't know if you've seen today, the rain last night, and this has been an ongoing issue. All the gravel they put in last night, it's all washed down. It's on the corner of Quaybog and Otis right now. This has been a continual issue. They said they've been putting mitigating things in. I've talked to highway, I've talked to contractors. They keep putting in temporary fixes. The temporary fixes keep washing into the driveways. They keep washing out. It wouldn't surprise me if the, that the, the base layer is already corroded underneath on the edges of what they've already laid down 'cause the washout is already penetrating underneath that base layer. So it wouldn't surprise me if the roads already sustained damage based on the rainfalls we've had this summer and the runoff. So with the catch basins and just the drainage plans, if they're not planning on finishing this till August, if we have a few more rainstorms last, like last night, I'm concerned that we're gonna have issues with this road before next, next, uh, next summer. Especially on my side of the road where we see a lot of that pooling water anyways 'cause my side of the road doesn't have a brand-new, handsome sidewalk.
Do you have any pictures by any chance?
I can show you pictures, sir. These were taken this morning. And I can show everybody if you want to. So this is facing down my.
Do you wanna do it on the?
Just put it on the camera so everybody could see it?
Yeah, tilt it down a little bit so the, it doesn't get the glare. Tilt the iPad down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, more straight.
So this is facing down my street. This is coming into my, uh, this is me looking up over this street. So this is where they put a lot of that soot watching into my driveway. This is a little bit more closer. So this is the edge of my driveway here. This is all washout. This is that temporary fix, which is just basically a piece of, uh, hay is what they put in. A little bit closer look. So all of the, um, rock that they put underneath has basically just washed out right into my yard, right into the driveway. This has happened multiple times. You can see some of that rock is starting to subset underneath the piece. I have other photos too. This is just of what I took this morning before I left my house. But if you actually walk along down Otis Street, um, along some of my neighbor's properties, uh, to look under and see under some of the fresh pavement that they, the fresh pavement that they put on there. I think that's just the base layer. Again, I'm not a contractor. That's not my field.
That is the base layer, yeah.
Yeah, so I, they're probably gonna come again and do the top layer, but the base layer is corroded. We're gonna have issues with processing stuff next year.
Is, is this the base, the, uh, catch basin that we're talking about over here?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. I can check if they're gonna be for the entire down to, what number are you Javier?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four Otis? I can check to see if they are gonna be affecting twenty-four Otis. But again, this would be just a different design. They're not even, they're not even currently installed.
Submit your pictures, you know, in a little brief description so at least he has it on writing and he can, you know, make it accountable.
Yeah. I would have the engineer take a look at it. Just make sure that it's not degrading underneath.
Yeah.
Cause we don't, it's a good point. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
And I would definitely have the engineer look at it, Jim.
Javier, just email it to me and I'll, I'll send it over to, to Bill Stordi.
I know we talked before about the project, but this, this morning I was like, okay, something needs to be done.
We had a bad storm last night.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I've had a lot of bad storms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier.
Based on the cost, this is fourteen grates. So that probably just every grate on the project is gonna get this cascade style.
I'm good with the grates.
Yeah.
It's a glassy cascade.
Yeah, yeah, it has like little ramps that go in.
Right.
Every hole has a little ramp.
Little different design.
Probably better for high-flow water is what I imagine. Instead of the water hitting it and jumping out, it gets swept in.
Throws it down.
Yeah.
It says it has an excellent water handling abilities, but the principle with, it's with safety for bicycles and foot traffic. Okay, do we have a motion?
They can do a motion. Uh, make a motion to approve Schedule A Change Order Two for School Street Phase Two and Otis Street Improvement Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Number five is discussion and possible vote to appoint the following individuals as a special traffic constables for a one-year term, anticipatable. So we have here Jonathan Russell and Greg Lewandowski.
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 Yeah. Sorry, my accent. But I do my best.
Who are these people with the talent?
So Jonathan Russell is currently with our fire department. He's a firefighter, EMT. And Greg Lewandowski is a gentleman that had applied for it directly with the chief. Both positions have been vetted by the chief and he brought forward this, these two individuals to be appointed.
So is Greg law enforcement or something?
Uh, I'm not sure what his background is.
Fire chief or police chief?
I don't, I'm not.
Police chief.
Police chief, yeah.
He's okay with that and I'm okay.
Yeah.
Unless there's something the administrator.
Not that I'm aware of, no. These, these were the recommendations that were made by the police chief.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint the following, well. One second.
What?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jonathan Russell as special traffic constable for a one-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
And I'll make a motion to appoint Greg Lewandowski, a special traffic constable for a one-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, motion approved.
Do we need to sign something?
The appointment notice?
I do. So I'm. That's the first thing that you guys wrote on. Do you wanna sign that too? And then both of those.
Do we sign this?
Yes, please.
Sixth day of June?
Yeah, so I didn't change it. I changed it.
Was that the Right of Refusal?
Yeah.
We'll sign the other ones afterwards. I have the rock eight on it.
Okay. Next, number six, we have review, a request from the town clerk to reduce the town's early voting hours for the oncoming September 3rd primary and November 5th elections with a possible vote to authorize the request, anticipatable.
She was, she has a dinner engagement tonight.
Well, she's pretty good at it, so.
The state allows her to reduce it for twenty-five percent as long as we have less than five thousand voters in town, and we do. So, um, and she would like to do it for both this September and the November election.
This is only for early voting?
Only for early voting, correct.
So this is not for the actual election day voting? So the boxes and everything will be open, the normal hours?
Normal hours, yeah. It's only for early voting.
And last in, in, um, for the March election, she only had twenty-five people that early voted.
This request did come from the clerk last year and it was approved by the board.
Just making, because you say in November 5th, just making sure.
Yeah, well, no, it should say for all, early, only early voting.
Yeah. So we could add that to the motion.
Yeah, it's only for early voting, yeah.
How is it written on the? Is it written on the?
On the agenda, it says early voting on the one that's posted.
Sure?
I wrote it.
All right. I'm good like that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
As long as, um, it's not affection, affecting the times that the boxes are open.
Yeah, I'm good too. Make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, to reduce weekday early, early voting hours to twenty percent of regular hours for both. That's the motion.
That's exactly how, no, this is how Lori said it had to be read.
Twenty percent, but she's got twenty-five percent.
She does have twenty-five percent on her.
Twenty-five percent, sorry.
Is it twenty-five percent or?
It is.
All right. Make a motion to reduce the weekday early voting hours to twenty-five percent of regular hours for both the September 3rd primary and the November 5th elections for early voting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Number seven, review the September 3rd state primary warrant with a possible vote to sign. Said warrant, anticipatable.
So this is the standard state primary warrant for the town. You know, reminding people that voting is gonna be happening on September 3rd from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. These are the positions that will be on the ballot and polling will be conducted here at the Shepherd Building for both polling place A and B.
Fine by me.
Absolutely.
So do we have a motion? Do we need a motion?
No motion written in there.
Yeah, there's a motion on. Yeah, there's a motion on seven.
Nope. Make a motion to approve the warrant for the September third state primary election.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, would it be possible, would the board entertain a motion to take item number eleven and twelve out of order? I know we have two appointments here, Paula Jo Fitz and Michael Corinzo.
Of course, no problem. You guys okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
So eleven and twelve?
Please.
So appointment of Paula Jo Fitz, Senior Center Lunch Coordinator with a possible vote to start her at a step three, grade C one on the wage compensation scale, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So as the board may recall, we had a vacancy as our lunch coordinator position in town. And so we posted for the position. We had several applicants apply for the position. We had scheduled five interviews for the position. We interviewed five individuals and there was one clear person that really rose to the top unanimously. And I sat down with the Council on Aging Board as well as the Senior Senate Director, Sharon Millie. She, you know, would be here this evening, but unfortunately she has, it's her birthday as well. And she has some out of town plans, but.
She's on Zoom.
Oh, she's on Zoom, okay, hi Sharon.
Happy birthday Sharon.
Happy birthday Sharon.
Happy birthday.
So we do.
Thank you, hi.
We do have Barbara Keef here, who's on our Council on Aging Board as well as Paula Fitz, who is the candidate that's before you this evening. Paula Fitz is no stranger to town. She's lived in town for many, many years and her family has owned and operated Tebow's right here in Warren for many years. And many people have visited and dined at the establishment, really enjoyed the, the food there and the service there. And it was a very popular spot for many, many years. Paula went on to work for the Massachusetts State Police Academy for eight years as their cook from October sixteenth, from October two thousand sixteen to August twenty, twenty-one, right before COVID and during COVID. And she was there for eight years and cooked many meals there for over three hundred trainees and two meals a day and has been on time with her meals. And she's served safe certified. So Paula is here this evening for consideration for the position. She's energetic, she wants to get to work, she wants to help out our seniors and this is a very important position to fill for the seniors.
Very much so.
They're hungry, hungry seniors.
Let's meet her.
If she worked at Tebow's, those seniors are gonna go very lucky.
Ever say something? Do you wanna stand up and say something? Introduce yourself to us?
Hi, I'm Paula Fitz. I've been a town resident since nineteen eighty-six. Jim, let me give you a little breakdown. So I was approached by a town resident back in April. Approaching me saying, oh, you need to apply for the position, the chef's leaving down there, you'd be a great fit. And I just kind of, you know, I have a full-time job, so I just kind of got passionate, well, I'm not sure. And then the more people approached me, the more it felt right. So I did apply for the position.
And you got it?
Very, very happy, very happy about it.
I'm a member of the town of Warren.
Very good.
Do good by our seniors.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you very much for applying.
It's very nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Right? Any discussion before the motion?
Nope.
Okay.
Alright. And?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Which, wait, yes, ma'am?
I'd like to thank a couple people that made this possible. First of all, our Senior Center Director. During the period when we didn't have a cook, on top of all her responsibilities as a director, she was cooking, she was doing bathroom duty, she was mopping floors. She had time to take care of personal items, issues that seniors had. I mean, the council appreciates everything she did. Secondly, we'd like to thank Jim because we know how busy he is, always at meetings. Anyway, he took and made us a priority. Did a lot of negotiating, a lot of interviewing. He took the time to sit with us to figure out exactly what we wanted and needed. Thank you, Jim.
No problem.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good job to both of them. Chair is awesome.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, guys.
Thanks Sharon, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I'm just saying thank you.
Alright. So I'll make a motion to appoint Paula Jo Fitz as the Senior Center Lunch Coordinator to start her at step three, grade C one on the wage compensation scale for a three-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alright. Number twelve?
Number twelve. The appointment of Michael J. Corinzo, Facilities Custodian with a possible vote to start him at a step two, grade BM one on the wage compensation scale, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board. So as you know, this is a very important position to fill and we need to fill it quickly because we have a need for the services. I posted for the position late June, early July. We had over twenty applicants apply for the position. We interviewed five candidates for the position. One clearly stood out for the position. His name was Michael Corinzo. He's from Brookfield, Mass. And he is an experienced custodian and foreman in his previous roles. In his, one of his previous roles was working for the College of the Holy Cross as a foreman in the facilities department for five years. As well as seven years working for, working for the Wachusett Regional School District as acting head custodian. Both positions were very involved with facilities work and maintenance work and preventative maintenance work. I feel as though that he will be a good candidate for the position and that he's qualified to do, to do the job.
Very good. Is it you, sir, right?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, Michael Corinzo. Couple things. I'm a very picky individual. I look at the big picture more so than anything is keeping and maintaining of the atmosphere, state work, work environment. Also, we are a base here of, to the public, which that's my thing. I'm a people guy. I like to make a difference. I like to, when people, I leave, they know Michael Corinzo was here. You can tell by just looking at a building. And I'm not tooting my own horn, but I, I think there's always something to do. Just lean it back to the restaurant business years ago, never leave the kitchen empty. So I'm excited for the opportunity to make a difference and I just wanna thank you all for the opportunity to do so.
Thank you very much. Good for the motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion, uh, make a motion to appoint Michael J. Corinzo as the Facilities Custodian to start at a step two on the BM one on the wage compensation scale for a three-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved. Congratulations so much.
Welcome aboard.
I just wanted to let you, the board, know that Paula and Mike will be starting on Monday.
Very good.
Nice.
To be sworn in?
Monday.
Monday? What time do you know?
She's in at nine o'clock. Well, eight thirty.
But you can come in. Anytime during the day, okay? Cause I started eight thirty. Thank you. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so yeah, it's sworn in on Monday. You're all set?
Sounds great. Everybody have a great weekend.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
You're welcome.
Should we just do number thirteen? It's another appointment.
Yeah, I mean, he's not here, but I mean, you can certainly do it.
As long as we're on appointments, right?
So appointment of John M. Couture, Alternate Building Inspector for one-year term, anticipated vote.
So Mister Chairman, as the board may recall, at the last annual town meeting, there was an article to get an alternate building commissioner made available to the town on an emergency basis for times in which our regular building commissioner, Bill Cantel, is either incapacitated or is on vacation or is away. This person is willing to fill in as an emergency provision within, as a building commissioner. He is currently the building commissioner for the town of Sutton, Mass. And has been there since two thousand. He also serves on the board and is a member of the Building and Regulation Standards that oversees the Mass State Building Code and, and Building Code Appeal Board. He has been a commissioner, he's also commissioner in North Brookfield and has been there since July of ninety-nine and has vast experience as a building commissioner. He is also certified as a building commissioner and a construction supervisor license. So we're essentially getting two building commissioners, you know, one who is our regular and one as an alternate for emergency purposes, who is also certified as a building commissioner. We could have somebody as just a building inspector, but this person is a building commissioner within itself, within its license. He is very capable of doing the position and is only looking to do it for, you know, emergency purposes for, you know, if, if Bill is not around.
Very good.
So why are we only doing a one-year appointment?
Typically, you know, in case, you know, something changes or, you know, if something doesn't necessarily, you know.
If it doesn't work out.
Work out, then, you know, you have some flexibility.
Okay.
This is an appointment, this is not necessarily a, a direct hire.
Yeah, yeah.
We're good?
I'm good.
Alright. I'll make a motion to appoint John M. Couture as the Alternate Building Inspector for a one-year term.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
You're welcome. Going back to A. Review and discuss report and findings made by R and H White Company on the conditions of fluid valves located at the town levy.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Jimmy McKeon, I don't know if he's on Zoom. Is he on Zoom?
Uh, no.
No. He, he wanted to be here this evening, but he had another commitment. But he did want me to get this on, on the docket for this evening to update the board. As you recall, back in June, the board had approved the expenditure of funds to do an inspection of the levy valves at the, at the levy. An inspection was done by the RH White Company. And their findings are within this report. They've also provided pictures of the valves, I believe there's five of them, that were inspected. Some are in better condition than others. Some are more accessible than others. And further investigation and further inspections and assessments will need to be done on the valves that are, that are, you know, not accessible. Like valve three, valve, valve five, four. Those really need further analysis. So, you know, RH White performed it. They said that valve one seems to be in working order. The valve chamber will need to be cleaned at some point. Valve two is in working order, again, the valve chamber will need to be cleaned at some point. Valve three is not working, we were able to op, is not working. We were able to operate this valve. The valve chamber is filled with debris, unable to access the valve, or the valve operator in its current condition. Valve four, valve four seems to be working, in a working order. We were able to operate this valve. However, the location is twenty-five plus or minus from the manhole access, twenty-five feet from the, from the manhole cover access. Valve five is inoperable. Both the valve box operator and the manhole have been completely filled with gravel and will need a thorough cleaning before moving forward. So Jimmy McKeon had mentioned that in his discussions with these valves that, you know, it, it is recommended at some point that they get in there and, and, and kind of clean them out to see, you know, if they can get some of the debris out. But I believe they were gonna have a discussion with some of the people at the mill and, and some other individuals from the, from RH White to see if they actually, four and five need to even be, you know, working, need that? Or were they purposely filled in? Five looks especially like it was purposely, purposely filled in.
Right.
Either it was a complete failure and it collapsed or somebody purposely filled it in.
But I will say that obviously this step that the town took and, and showing some work will, I feel, help our cause when we, when we do meet with the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm sure we'll be meeting with them in the fall sometime, you know, showing them some of the progress that is being done on this. But, you know, it does look like at some point, I know the committee met yesterday. They're gonna be, Jimmy's gonna be working with RH White in the future to see what other type of things that need to be done, you know, whether it needs to be cleaned and getting some quotes for that. You know, there may be a, a request in the future for, for, for some cleaning of that in the future. I know that the next item on the list will be talking about some, some brush around there.
So there's no quote to do this work?
Not yet, no.
And would RH White do that?
They can, they can do some of that, yep.
I guess that would be the next thing is what does this cost? Cause we might, we gotta get it done anyway, right?
It has to be done. Yes, sir?
At the meeting yesterday, when we, before we closed on, we did take a vote or made a motion, take a vote to get quotes from RH White in two different fashions. One, the first to get. One, the first, to get one and two cleaned and possibly three, and then the second quote is to get four and five done separately, because five, we don't know whether that was purposely filled in or not, or there's another person who's out there that they're going to contact to see if he has more information on whether that hole was purposely filled in for a reason, and if it was, then we don't have to touch it at all. If there's no reason at all and nobody knows why, then we're going to have to explore that further.
We'll have to make sure with the Corps of Engineers, because the Corps of Engineers, any changes like that, we have to get approved through them first.
Right, so we need, we're also checking with them to find out if they have any information on five, to see if they know why that was filled in. So, the box, the window, the open box in the PIB at the top that says open, closed, is completely blank, so the inside guts are gone.
Oh.
Okay, so to me, it looks like it was purposely decommissioned, but we don't know that, there's no paperwork that says that, that we have. So, we're going to break the quote down into two separate quotes, one and two, and three, and four and five after that, if five even needs to be done. And it's going to go out to three different companies and we're going to get, everybody's going to get the same opportunity to put on the same work, so we'll see what comes in, but that's where we are.
So, on number three, why, it says valve is not working, we were able to operate this valve, what does that mean?
Operate the control, but the valve, there's nothing coming through the valve, there's no water coming through. If you look at one and two, you can see a little bit of flow coming through, one and two.
Okay.
And one and two are in the open position. So, three functions, but there's no water coming through it, so we don't know how bad off that is, whether the gate is closed down below, broken off, or what.
Okay.
So, instead of forcing it, we need to go further with it.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you, I can't imagine there's any spare parts for these things, right?
Yeah, and some of that might be debris that's coming through the pipe, or it might be just ages, aging of the pipe itself, and the pipe may be collapsing in on itself.
Well, thank you for the committee in driving this up, we just have to do it.
It's going to have to be done one way or another.
Yeah, at least we have to show up that we're working on it-
Yeah.
-to make it happen. Baby steps, but solid. Anything else to comment?
Nope. Continuing on to the next one here, still with the levee.
We'll always talk about the levee, forever. Number nine, review proposal from Northern Tree Service LLC to cut back brush along the town's levee and possible vote to authorize the use of funds from the town levee maintenance article. Anticipative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, before you this evening is a proposal from Northern Tree Service LLC to take down the brush along the levee, along the side of the levee, as requested by the Army Corps of Engineers. The committee, the town levee committee has met, they talked about this proposal, they would like to start moving this proposal forward, especially now that it's end of summer and growth has changed directions. Now typically, usually the end of August, September is a good time to start addressing some of these issues, and Northern Tree, I'm sure, will start to fill up with work. They are on the state contract list as a, as a vendor that we can directly contract with, which is good, they have experience in this type of field, and their quote to complete the project is eleven thousand, two hundred dollars.
So, are they only knocking it down to four feet, or they knocking it right down?
As low as possible it says.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah.
Four feet or greater.
If it's four feet or greater, right, they're going to cut it all the way down.
Yeah, we just want to get as low as possible, if they're going to cut it.
So, they're not going to get it, cut or touch anything three eleven?
Oh, I mean-
Well, the purpose is, is there's no supposed, there's not supposed to be any brush-
Right.
-in there at all, and the Corps of Engineers said, as long as you can get it down to four feet, we know you're making an effort, but it needs to go away.
Maybe next year we-
Because it's ruining the levee.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it says four feet or greater, cut as low as possible to the ground, and they're going to address the invasive bittersweet vines and the honeysuckles, sumac, willow, and they're going to cut it right down to the ground. Prevailing wage rates apply here.
Of course. So, there were two quotes, Davy Resource Group, right?
There was another one that, that was submitted, that we went after, which was Davy, Davy Group, Resource Group, they were much higher, they were sixteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, and then we also reached out to Fairview Forestry, another company, but they never responded back to us. So, we've done our due diligence, and it's clear that, that Northern is a reputable company and they're on the state list and they have experience dealing with this type of request.
I'm okay. Are we good on the budget?
Yes, so, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for this, for levee maintenance, so, twenty-five thousand dollars minus eleven-two is what you'll have left.
What about the other inspections? Are those there too? The ones that we just talked about?
The ones we talked about were paid out of last fiscal year's budget.
Okay.
So, fiscal year twenty-four, that was paid out of.
Okay.
You good?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Make a motion, please.
Yep, I'll make a motion to use the funds from the town levee maintenance article for the cutting back the brush at the levee.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye, motion approved.
Thank you.
Let's get those trees and everything above three eleven get down. Okay, number ten, we, there's an acknowledgement of the town's award of nine hundred fifty thousand fiscal year twenty twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's important that the public now knows, the town has been very aggressive with going after CDBG funds, and we've partnered consistently with our planning commission, the Central Mass. Regional Planning Commission, and working with them and the town, we were able to submit our, our application for CDBG funding for the grant cycle of twenty twenty-four, and the town was just awarded nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address, to address River Street, Central Street, Cutter Park improvements.
Very good.
Excellent.
It's awesome.
I will also bring to the board's attention that HUD has recently done a reanalysis of, and a reassessment of our income ratios that will affect us for future grants. I don't have the exact numbers, and what that means is that the wealth of the town has grown, according to HUD.
We know that for sure, okay.
To HUD, and so, after HUD's analysis, because the, they, they said that the town has grown in wealth, brings us down in, in, in what we're eligible for, for CDBG funds.
Yeah.
So, it's a double-edged sword.
I don't know about that.
What is the criteria?
Yeah.
Because we are far behind in way other things, like, look at infrastructure, water, drainage, sewer.
Well, they're looking at the medium income-
Correct.
-of the, the residents averaged out through the whole town, and I, I don't see that, because we have a lot of residents that are retirees, and we're not having that many people with higher incomes moving to the town. I, I don't see that kind of person moving to our town.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly something that we're going to have to keep a watchful eye on. I'm not sure if there's a, an appeal process that can be done through the federal government, but if there is, you know, we'll certainly look at that.
Yeah, definitely look at that, because, you know, that's going to hurt us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice to think that our residents are making more money and have more money overall, but, you know, I don't see that an actual thing happening, so.
So, but is it also possible, I mean, through inflation and just years since the last evaluation, that everybody in the state has-
It could be.
-incremented a little bit, so-
Could be.
Relative, we may still be okay?
Well, you know, from, from, I don't have the exact numbers, but from the discussions that I was having with some of our reps over at CM RPC, the numbers are going to change, you know, significantly.
Okay.
So, it's not, you know, we're not talking about a few percentage points, we're talking about-
Wow, alright.
-you know, multiple percentage points, and I don't, I don't know what, what their logic is, or what's the federal government's logic for, for, you know, you know, computing that assessment.
You know, it could be anything, maybe just throwing up, you know, like an equation to, you know, lower, you know, stop giving money to the old towns a little bit. Could be anything.
Fudging the numbers?
Yeah.
In their favor, not ours?
Yeah, you know, maybe they, they, somebody told them, oh, you're only going to have nine instead of ten this time, so the way to do it, I don't know, I can't say, I'm just, it's just that.
I will, I, I will talk with Chris to get the exact numbers, I think he's got the exact numbers, and then we can certainly, I'm sure they'll be coming to CDAC, as well as I'll make sure it's brought to the board.
Well, if it's something statewide, you know, okay, but if we're the only ones, because we've been trying to do better, it's not fair.
I believe, I think they do it every five years, like a, a, a revaluation of everybody, and I think this was our time.
Okay, I would like to see the criteria.
I will try to get that.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to believe, all of a sudden now we're, we have more wealthy residents. Rich, you're going to have to move out.
Yeah, sorry.
You're throwing us off our average.
It doesn't work, because we've been here forever, so.
Yeah.
You know, it, it probably depends on, on when people answer surveys too, and how they answer them.
Hmm. Yeah.
Maybe they thought they were applying for credit. Okay, let's move on. Do we have a presentation by the police officer?
Stable.
Stable, okay. Oh, it says stable.
For our next meeting. I need my reading glasses.
Discussion on September dates to hold a public workshop at the senior center on the progress of the Wrights Mill Master Recovery Plan with the Westons in Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the, the folks from Weston and Sampson, who are in charge of our Wrights Mill Master Recovery Plan, would like to give you an update on where the project is and how it's been going at a selectman's meeting on the twenty-second, and-
September twenty-second?
August.
Okay.
August twenty-second, and then they would also like to have a workshop in September at the senior center. They threw out dates for the workshop on either the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth of September.
The sooner the better, I guess.
The workshop will be similar, but on a smaller scale than the workshop that we had with the master plan. This will be focusing in on one project, the, the EDA grant Wrights Mill Master Recovery Plan, in the area encompassing that footprint, so I don't anticipate it lasting for, you know, more than two hours at best, because it's one project. The senior center is available either the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, and whatever the board would prefer.
And what time would that be?
Six or seven, or, you know, whatever, I don't know, I think they're flexible.
I guess it doesn't, either date is fine with me, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would say the eighteen, and if something happens, we'll still have the other one.
So, eighteen, six PM or seven or six?
Well, it's for the residents, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, make it as early as you can, so.
Six, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, six PM on the eighteenth, okay, very good. And then they will come in, in September, I mean, they will come in in August on the, on our twenty-second meeting to give you an, an update on the overall project, well in advance of this, of this, you know, workshop.
Awesome.
Very good.
So, would we say six o'clock?
On the eighteenth of September.
Okay.
We're good?
Okay.
Number fourteen, review proposed continued maintenance agreement with BG Mechanical for boiler service, belt service and air filter service, with a possible vote to continue safe service, anticipative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is our standard maintenance agreement with BG Mechanical, who services our, our boiler here at the Shepherd Building, they, they do, they perform maintenance on the boiler, belt service and air filter service for the building, and this is a standard contract, looking, our current contract with them is set to expire.
Okay.
We haven't had any issues with them, they've done a good job, right?
Really good job.
Really good job.
Did the pricing change?
Uh, looks about the same, I mean, maybe a three percent increase.
Yeah, very small.
Okay. Make a motion?
Yeah. You good, Rich?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the maintenance agreement with B. and G. Mechanical for boiler service, belt service and air filter service.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye, motion approved. It's your turn. Town administrator annual performance evaluation. Please step up front, I'm just kidding. So, guys, we're going to do, here in public, the actual evaluation of our town- So guys, we're gonna do um here in public, the actual um evaluation of our town administrator.
I did not receive any paperwork on this.
Just the email we got. So we're gonna do it here. Did they get the copy too?
Yes.
Okay. So the idea is to um go in front of the public, show the evaluation that we do and and all three of us gonna evaluate the town administrator uh tonight and um have it done tonight too. Do you wanna pull it out on the TV?
What am I pulling up, though?
The evaluation.
Uh yeah, it's in the email, yeah.
The last one or just the blank form?
The blank form.
Alright, let me see. I've been opening my email up on this computer in a little while and now it's flooding me.
Somebody tried to join in?
Or this stupid reminder came up, I don't know. I think it was that reminder.
So while we look for that, I I I just, I don't have enough words to thank you for the hard work you've done for the town.
Do you have it?
I thought I opened it.
It was taking a while because our internet is running super slow. I just did a couple tests on my computer and the phone and it's just worse than dial up.
What's going on with the internet right now?
So um today uh we had uh an outage of the internet um and um the I T company is attributing it to um the storm that we had last night. And they're saying that uh the Comcast router um is not working effectively and that some of the ports on the Comcast router are are not working. And so they had a, uh they they were on the phone with Comcast for quite a bit of time today uh and doing all these tests and running tests and they finally ended up cha- taking out one of the connection lines and putting it into a different port on the router and that turned on the internet right away and so we've, you know, uh Entree Technology feels that the um router um that is down there uh needs to be updated and we will have to call Comcast to get that done.
And there's only one good port.
One good port.
That we have in there, so if that port goes out, we're down again.
So at that same time, I would also recommend that, and I know we had talked about this a few months ago, and the quotes that I got was very short money to increase the speed from Comcast um by, I think it was at most twenty-five to thirty dollars more a month. That's something that we can definitely sustain and get the speed increased a little bit more than what we currently have. I just assume just get that all done at the same time that we ask them for a new router. Yep.
Well, sometimes your speed improves when you get the new router.
That 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 very well could be true.
But they also gonna come back to us and say, well, you got a new a new router, but because you don't have these enough speed, your router is not gonna push that out. So.
Yeah.
They could also say that.
I'd say let's, let's get the speed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we we have a lot going on with the speed and we get a lot more technology now.
Yeah.
A lot more people on the internet here and, you know, our phone systems and everything else.
Yeah, Wi-Fi is right open to the public on the wall.
Yeah.
Wi-Fi, yeah. And I'm I'm pleased to report to the board, the internet was down, but the phones worked.
Very good.
Good test.
How are the phones been going?
Phone's been going good. We had uh, you know, uh obviously there was a period of, you know, some troubleshooting and some punch list items that needed to be addressed. We got most of those, if if not all of them cleared up now and I think everybody seems to be liking the new system.
Yeah, the only one that we're still having problems is is the phone down in the gym. I was down there the other day and it said no, today, and it said no service.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll have to, let me, uh I'll look at it. We'll reboot it again. Um that one we may have to replace. You know, it's under warranty.
Okay. So you got it up? Um David, you know very well this evaluation with your baby. You wanna drive, do this evaluation with Mr. Farrar?
I can, so. Let's go through this here.
Like I was saying, thank you very much for your service. I think it's outstanding. Uh from me, my side, the way I see it, you get five stars.
Thank you very much.
You know, it's it's you've done a lot of work. You've been very busy. You call us all the time, you know, you know, you report to us. It's it's very. It feels like anybody can bend on these seats and you, you know, have the control of, you know, not letting us do something we're not supposed to do.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and privilege uh to serve and to work with you guys um and to work with all the staff here. Everybody here is a very special person uh and I really appreciate um the warmth and the um in the teamwork style that we take here um in working with um people um in the various departments. It's a lot of fun. I really do enjoy the job and I really do love the town.
Okay. So, Mr. Farrar, welcome and thank you for being present for your employee evaluation, which we will be doing in the public today. Um did you do your self-assessment sheet?
Did I do my my self-assessment sheet?
Did you already complete that?
I I did uh I did submit a um a um a letter um a while ago of, you know, different goals that we had achieved um last year um that we could go through if you'd like. Um and that was during the uh the presentation of our budget process and our town report. Um within the town report, um I had indicated, you know, that there were some initiatives that we had talked about and that I was pleased to report that, you know, we had accomplished. Um one of the initiatives um that, you know, we were working on is obviously some additional grants and additional funding um and and to reestablish the capital planning committee. Um that was a a a really uh an additional need for the town that um we were without capital planning uh for several years. Uh we um I was able to revitalize the bylaw, update the bylaw, bring people together uh to facilitate a capital plan and a capital budget this year. It was very critical. And where towns get um caught up in um uh in 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 things is by not having capital planning and not having a capital budget. Um so that was a a big initiative that we had brought forward, that I brought forward, that I know that the board wanted to see that reestablished. Um working with departments um to fill vacancies is was critical. I I know that there was a directive out there to uh to work on uh projects and initiatives uh to improve our senior center, which uh was which was done, uh uh initiatives for um for cost-saving measures um which we did with um some of our budget items that we did this year, Entree Technologies, um you know, identifying that, that's saving about nine thousand dollars um, you know, for uh our I T services. A new phone system, I know that was talked about for several years. We made that a reality this year um in in dealing with um insurance costs, rising insurance costs um and looking at ways to uh better find um, you know, situations where we can look at, um you know, potentially um, you know, taking off insurances after a period of time where, you know, we've, you know, owned a a a a piece of equipment for for ten years, but we're still insuring it um, you know, at 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 its full value, um you know, as as it was ten years ago. Those types of going through and and looking at things to try to see if we can save some money um was critical and and those are some of the the goals that we had talked about on 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 working on some of the initiatives. But they are outlined in the town report and in the uh in the um report that I gave to the uh to the town meeting.
Okay. So everybody's aware, we have, we rate employees from one through five and five being an outstanding, which consistently exceeds all exce- exceptional standards. Four is performance always meets and often exceeds standards. Three is you meet the standards, uh you're doing your job basically. Um two, uh the level is below expectations and it needs to improve. And one being unsatisfactory, uh where there needs to be correction, either the performance is very poor or the quality of the work is very poor and it needs to be corrected. So that's the standards you'll be rated on, one being the best, well, five being the best, one being the the worst. So for performance dimensions, we have job job-related expertise. Alright, and that's demonstrate skills, knowledge required for the position. Okay, and the past year since your last evaluation, I I feel you've definitely uh demonstrated your skills and what you've done in the position and your knowledge. It's grown since the last time. So I would feel he falls in the outstanding for that. What do you guys feel?
Yeah, I think so, like the trainings he's taken, um like the um.
He's been doing trainings, you know, all kind of um uh meetings with other town administrators, you know, all that. I think in once in a while he asks us permission to take a class or take, you know, something. I think it's very good. Yeah, I I me, it's five stars.
So that particular one is five? Okay.
I also did forget to mention as one of the goals of also in a directive by one of the board uh was to reestablish, you know, these uh employee evaluations.
Yeah.
Uh they weren't done in 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 quite some time, uh or departments would do some and others wouldn't. Um we now have a uniformed um format and a a defined process.
Okay, the next um item on that is perceived as a key resource in the field or profession. So being a town administrator, you are the go-to guy. I think he's done very well in that position.
Just had a big, good example with the gentleman in the back who's gone. He was gonna email you all this stuff, so you are the the person, the con- the main contact person.
So what do you feel he deserves?
Five stars.
It's hard, I it's kind of a weird one to say, how do you, what's successful versus exceeds versus outstanding in a category like this? I don't know. You know what I mean?
Well.
He's definitely successful.
Last year we had him and it's five stars.
Okay.
Well, we're looking at this year.
Yeah.
You're gonna evaluate on this year, the current? And.
Well, I think if I.
Were there any failures at any point?
Oh, okay. No, I would, I don't think so.
Okay, so.
Five last.
No observable failures? And has he met the requirement of doing that?
Yeah.
Has he exceeded it? Has he gone be above and beyond?
Well, he did show up on a Saturday night with a sewer line break or problem on School Street.
Yeah, what about the gas too? I said it's five, five.
So it's five? You're doing well. So far. Uses skills appropriately to accomplish tasks.
I'm just amazed on when we have an employee gone, the way, how you move so quickly to get, you know, all the indeed, you know, uh looking for somebody, getting all the um people that want to apply for the job and do that, that that's a lot of work. That's really a lot, you know, um that's a skill that not many people have.
So we're on uses skills appropriately to appropriately to comp- accomplish tasks. So his overall knowledge and his experience in getting the job done, how do you think he's feared?
I think it's a five, but I'm gonna give you a four this time.
He had a four last time.
Again, we we can't look at what's last time. We're looking at what he's doing now.
But like, has he maintained or?
What do you feel?
I don't, either a four or five, I guess.
So that's a five.
It's not an either or, it's it's one or the other.
I don't know, it's hard to rate some of this stuff.
So.
I'm also very pleased when when, you know, sometimes people escalate, you know, in behavior and everything, how you your skills to keep everything calm and control the situation is very good too. You know, at meetings, you know, uh you know, in the town or outside, like for example, the uh School Street project, we had a couple, you know, angry neighbors and you've done a wonderful job neutralizing everything and ma- making everything move forward. You have your skills to get grants, obviously. Uh you have your skills to make reports, keep everything under control. You said five.
No, you said four or five.
Four or five, I mean, you know.
That's a four point five.
Four point five.
So you're you're a four?
Yeah.
Okay. And. I I I'd say he exceeds expectations on that, um so I'd give him a four too, so do a four overall. Um and that's kind of a a difficult one to evaluate you on um because you're being evaluated in other areas on your knowledge and what you've actually done. And I think you're doing very wa- well, so um. So next item is actively keeps up to date on position and professional knowledge. What do you feel he deserves there?
I would say probably five.
I would say he exceeds expectations.
So he's a four?
Yeah.
So. Exceeds the expectations?
Yeah, yeah. He definitely looks for things, you know, to improve.
He's not stagnant, he's just not.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna do what I need to do. He's getting more. You go to conferences. We've been to conferences with you and seen you do that um to get, gain more knowledge. And I think he would exceed expectations on that also. So four?
Uh huh, yes, sir.
Very good, sir. Do you guys have any comments about any of these? For job-related expertise, the overall tasks?
I just hope that he keeps in this direction and, you know, if you keep doing what you're doing, you're, it's good, it's great. I think it's, you know, it's very positive.
So, great job. And keep up. Great work. Continue to seek professional knowledge?
Yeah, I think it's.
And training or education or something like that, yeah.
Continue to seek career development.
Yeah, that's the word.
Okay. Cause I opened this up in the email. Next thing is communication and customer service. So keep supervisor informed.
I would say five.
To me exceeds expectations.
Okay. So I would say five on that also because he's always keeping us informed, notifies us in writing or verb, you know, calls us of any issues and any ongoing issues. He's always reaching out to help, you know, get us the information.
Agree.
So I would say a five, you're saying a five.
Okay, so exceeds more than expectations.
What is doing outstanding in it?
Outstanding.
Well, you can do a four, but two five, two fives make a five.
Yeah, I'll do a four, so you guys win, and we put a five.
Okay. So we'll give you a five in that category. All right, communicates clearly, clearly both verbally and in writing. And apparently I can't. So how do you feel he's done in that?
Communicates clearly. Yeah, probably I'd do a four.
To me, he's really good, he exceeds the expectations.
So a four?
Yeah.
And I would say a four also. And I, I would make the comment that you're doing well in that area. But none of us are as good as Rich and we always can improve.
Are we doing my evaluation next time?
You're next.
Okay, next item is encourages input and accepts constructive criticism. So how do you feel?
Trying to think if I've ever.
We don't really criticize him too much.
No.
We need to do more of that. You don't give us much to criticize your about.
He doesn't give us much of a chance, he doesn't get in trouble.
No.
I will say that, to me, I think it exceeds the expectations because once or twice I've said something to him that I feel like I may hurt him a little bit on that and he takes it, you know, very well, you know.
So exceeds a four?
He exceeds, yeah.
He exceeds the expectations on that matter, he.
I would agree.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, do you have any questions about that?
No.
Any of them so far?
No.
If you have any questions about any of these evaluation points, just.
I appreciate it.
Okay, listens and possess, possesses information appropriate. No, listens and processes information appropriately. Apparently I'm up.
I, I do admire him because we've been in situations where he's very tense and he gets a question and instead of saying something that he doesn't know, he goes, okay, let me look at it, let me search, let me investigate and I'll get back to you. I, I think he is very clever on that.
So I think a very good example was the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
And the way he demonstrated himself during the meeting, even being hit with some tough questions at points. So, you know, and you're always an active listener. I think that's very good quality.
And an active target.
You're the top guy on the chart here, in the pyramid, so yeah.
Curves at you and you never get a strike. You always hit the ball.
So I would say he does outstanding in that aspect because he is a very good listener and he does process the information appropriately.
Me too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so you get a five on that one? So adapts communication to the needs of the audience, uses tact when dealing with others. I would say that relates a lot with the, the previous one, they kind of go hand to hand. And I would fall up with a five on that also.
I'll say a four.
I would say four or a five, but.
You gotta say one or the other.
You know, exceeds expectations.
So a four. I get outvoted on that one, sir. Okay. So recognizes customers' internal and external needs as priorities and strives to meet or exceed needs and expectations. Okay, how do you feel he's done?
As a communicator and customer service, I think he does an outstanding, you know, work with customers, you know, he's the face of the town and it's either talking to a authority on the state or just somebody who knocks on the door, I think is very good at it. I give you a five.
Five.
Five?
I mean, the, the woman here today.
Yeah.
Right from the senior center board or the council on aging.
Absolutely.
Said that she felt like Jim made their, you know, lunch coordinator thing a priority.
Very good.
And she felt, you know, taken care of, I guess, or, you know.
Yes.
Your customers are your best advocates for this.
Yeah.
It's not us, people are speaking for you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Is courteous and helpful to other employees and to the public.
This one echoes the one above.
Yeah.
So.
Five.
You got a five on that? Very good, good job.
Thank you.
So you're, you're doing very well here. Do you gentlemen have any comments for communication and customer service related to Mr. Farrar?
No comments.
Well, you just said he's outstanding, you don't wanna get, say he's how outstanding or?
I'll put it this way, my comment will be, I really respect and admire the way he treats the public.
Okay. So. I'm gonna phrase that in a way in context to this. You're highly respected amongst your peers in the community?
Yeah. You could say overall a very effective communicator.
Overall an effective communicator. Outstanding work? Outstanding job?
Outstanding.
Okay. Next one, quality of work and productivity. Perform, performs work with accuracy and consistently error-free with few revisions needed. So how do you guys feel he's been doing with that?
I think he's doing pretty well.
Successful or?
Outstanding.
Exceeds?
He's outstanding on that area, he, he checks all the agendas before posting and everything, make sure that we are complaining with everything. I think it's a good job.
Have we ever had errors in the past that we had to?
Like with emails or communications? I think I've caught like maybe one or two in my mathematical analysis. But for the most part, everything's good to go. You know, like if he's gonna send something out. Or in when he's sending emails like to us or whatever, to the, to employees, whatever.
So is he exceeds expectations or outstanding?
I don't know, I guess exceeds.
Outstanding.
I would say exceeds on that one. So four. There's always improvement that could be made. And there has been agendas where we've seen things. Final, final product is neat, presentable, professional and thorough. So is he successful, exceeds, outstanding?
Exceeds expectations.
Unsatisfactory?
Yeah, I could, I could go with exceeds.
Exceeds expectations, so four. Sets priorities effectively and consistently meets deadlines.
Yes, he does.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think he's been outstanding on that one. He's very clear with deadlines and finishing, you know, getting things done on time.
He is.
Yeah, I'd go, I could do a five, yeah.
I'd agree with that, five. Very good with your deadlines and getting on us to make sure that we meet our deadlines also, so yes, that's definitely a five.
Yeah, sign your warrants.
I warrant that, yes.
Would Karen do that?
I need you to do this, we're running out of time.
When you're not here, he does that.
Karen's definitely a five on that one too. So, all right. Completes a reasonably, oh, completes a reasonably expected amount of work in the time allotted. So with this one, I think we've all seen him do way more than he is probably should be doing.
Yeah, I would, that's what I was thinking.
You've been stepping up quite a bit with a lot of these tasks and taking on a lot of things. You go to a lot of meetings to get information and pass information and, you know, you, you do. You're definitely stepping up in that area in my eyes.
Yeah.
It's outstanding.
I would say five or an outstanding too, it's.
And even the fact that like I've talked to him at nine or nine-thirty at night.
Yes.
Right, about.
We've all gotten the late night calls.
Saturdays or Sundays, he's there.
Weekends, yeah, so.
Yeah. Very few times that I've called and you haven't answered the phone and that's usually because you're talking to somebody else and trying and then you follow up.
Then he calls right away.
Yeah. So that goes up to the next one, follows up when necessary.
I don't know how to rate that, I mean, he does, so, but is it outstanding expectations or succeeds, right?
Also it exceeds expectations and not because of his fault not being outstanding, but because he's busy doing something else.
Well, follows up when necessary.
Yeah.
So he does that on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Consistently. He definitely exceeds the expectations on it.
Well, so like this thing with the stuff on Otis Street. I would, I expect him that he'll get those photos, talk to the engineer, you know, keep on top of that issue. Again, with all the other stuff, I mean, this is like a new thing now he's gotta do, right? In addition to whatever daily stuff he's doing at the time, now he's got this new thing, he's gotta keep track of, so.
So what are you saying?
I'll say again, four or five, probably a.
Four or five, it's four.
Four point eight nine six, I'll give him a five.
You'll give him a five?
Yeah.
And you gave him a four?
Yep.
And follows up when necessary, and I think that kind of goes hand in hand with the work and allotted. And you do continue to follow up and you do follow up with emails, you call us, we. You know, I, most recent one is the sign that was over by Rogers Farm, the battery was dead, the traffic sign. I mentioned it to you and it's charged up and working again, so. I don't know if you had a part in that.
I called Kyle and I asked, I, I, I let him know that and he was aware of it as well and he went out there and got it replaced.
Okay, so I would say a five on that also. Manages own time efficiently. So this is your personal time. And I, I would say out of all of these, this is the one thing you need to improve on. Because he spends more time here than he spends at home.
So it's improvement expected?
I would like a work-life balance.
Yeah.
You know, like any other employees, chief. You know, you, you gotta. You know, you, you gotta have, you gotta have a happy life and happy cowork, co, you know, work-life too.
Yeah.
So.
I will be on vacation starting on Wednesday.
Yeah, but you'll be working from your vacation most likely.
I'll be in Florida.
Okay, yeah, no work. How long?
A week.
Alright. We can make it without you for a week, so you know.
I'll still have my cellphone if you need me.
Only if the building's on fire, we already discussed that.
Cause there's nothing you could do from Florida.
It's gonna be a week.
Oh, he'll, he'll try.
Yeah.
It, it, it's good to see you're very invested in the town and the community and helping out. Gotta spend time with your wife. Your mom going to?
Yeah, my mom.
And your mom's going to? Yeah. So what would you guys feel? How he manages own time efficiently?
Well, he devotes a lot of time to the town, he's still married. So, I mean, there is some balance there. Obviously, his wife isn't ready to kill him.
Successful?
I will, I will say a exceeds expectations, but in a good way of, okay, yeah, you just have to balance that.
That's not what he's asking. That's not what he's asking. Is he managing his own time efficiently?
But what does that mean then? Does that mean personal or just his own, yeah, I don't know what that means, own time?
I think he's somehow doing it very well because he's still here, he's still married, he's, he's going on vacation, everything's working fine. I just would like to see that you have more, spend more time with your wife and, you know.
You know, i- i- it's. You know, the position was new to me, right? So, as David had mentioned earlier in this, in the interview, you know. I kinda grew into it a little bit, right? You saw that, you know, maybe I didn't know as much as I do, do know now. And so as time progresses, as fires get put out, things will, will adjust.
That's the hope.
That's the hope.
We just don't wanna burn you out either.
I appreciate that.
That's why it's important to us to make sure that you don't get burned out because, you know, at some point, people hit their breaking point where they've had enough. And they look for other things to give them a better work-life balance. And we just want you to know that we, we focus on that and we wanna make sure that you have a good work-life balance. But it's also up to you a- as a manager to make sure that happens too.
I still love what I do.
That is very clear, we know that.
Well, that's why I say a four, because you do a very good job balancing. However you do it, I, the only thing, on the side outside evaluation, I think you're spending a lot of time here. You need a bit of a more balance in your personal life. You know, which, that's why I have a four, so next year I could give you a five, you know, if I see that balance.
So what do you feel?
So, my read of this is like, day to day, is he able to juggle different things and get things done, right? So I would say a four.
A four?
Yeah.
So four. Okay. So we're applicable, efficiently maintains the budget. I.
Five.
Yeah, five, that's, you are honest about this budget. And anytime we have some grand ideas, you give us that look like, yeah, no, we don't have that money. So, I think you do very well with that and we're very lucky to have you handling that portion. So with the budget, you're five?
Yeah.
Five.
Five.
Makes a fifteen.
Thank you.
Participates in town trainings?
Yes, he does.
Do you do your cyber trainings?
I do, I do. I, I, I do have the reports, I participate in the cyber trainings and we have a new cyber program. That's just came out this month where people have to now log in and create a profile. So the profile will monitor everybody's activity on the cyber, you know, security. Tests that are given out every month, so.
I did mine today.
But it's interesting, it doesn't say on or on it. So I had several people say, is this legit or am I gonna get in trouble?
It's one of those testing emails.
Yeah.
Which I'll always click, cause it's not gonna break.
What? Yeah.
Look, it's a test.
You're gonna get the real one come in someday that isn't a test.
No, 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 the test.
So our computer guru is our most vulnerable subject.
You know, because the problem is when you say, and they ask you for your username and your password, and now you're in trouble. But as long as you don't do anything, if they ask you, click here to download this, yeah, okay.
Upload this seventy percent coupon.
Yep.
Alright, so. For Mr. Farrar, participates in town training. How do you feel he's done in this? We've held other training too for all the employees. Have you done the CPR training?
Yes.
So he's completed that. Also, the, um. The phone training we've done.
So, a lot of these.
A lot of other things.
Yeah, so.
The customer service training.
Yeah, well, he set that up.
Well, but he was also there.
Yeah.
You could set these things up and say, hey, good luck, guys, but he participated.
Four?
Five?
I just think a lot of them, like everyone, should be doing them. So you can't exceed expectations if you're doing something you're supposed to do.
Right.
It's when you go above. So like you said, the CPR, he didn't have to take CPR. He didn't have to take.
So four?
Yeah, so I mean, a four would be good.
Then what do you say?
Five.
Four? Oh, five, and I'll, I'll say four, because I agree, exceeds expectations, but it is what it is. Just town training and everybody's here, but you just do set them up, so you're above everybody else, so I would say exceeds expectations on that. So I'd give you a four on that one. Okay. We have a lot more to go here, guys.
Yeah.
Alright, comments, do you guys have any comments on quality of work and productivity?
It's your turn.
You guys have such creative imagination, but when I ask you something like this, you don't, I'll go blank.
I know, it's true.
Yeah, how hard is it to talk good about Jim?
Well, it's kinda like the questions covered it all. So like what more can you add that the questions, you know what I mean, like?
Can I be excused? I need to give this to Dan.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Awkward silence.
I mean, you, you can go back to your thing about work, family, balance kind of thing.
I would say he's doing a good job, but we would also like to see a little bit, you know, towards that balance of life and, you know, the work.
Like, we appreciate his dedication.
Yeah. It's not something that your, your number's gonna go down next year if you, you know, balance and not become a workaholic.
Did I miss anything?
Just the workaholic part.
Yeah.
So, I wrote, you're doing a great, you're doing a great job, but we would like to see more of a work-life balance.
Sure.
Sounds good.
In the future. Right?
Yep. Which that doesn't mean they're gonna get a lower grade next time, it's just gonna, you know, cause it's.
Okay. Only three hundred more questions to go.
Excellent. How come? I thought it was, there were four hundred.
Thirty minutes.
So initiative, creativity, and problem solving is the next section. And makes appropriate suggestions for improvements.
I don't know, successful?
Okay.
Exceeds expectations.
How so?
Because. Every time that I've been asked for an opinion, the way he makes that suggestion is so feels so appropriate. And not, it doesn't make me feel uncomfortable of saying something. It is very clear on what he's asking me and, you know. It is appropriate.
So how does that exceed?
Let me put it this way.
Does it exceed your expectations?
My evaluation to him, yes.
Okay. And you're successful?
Successful, I think.
I, I would, I would give him a four on this also because. It's been many times where he's come to us with a problem and also had a solution to that problem. So, in this, when you do come in, you're looking for improvements or something to happen. He's identified an issue and made the appropriate suggestions for how to resolve that issue. I don't think he's ever really come to us and said, I don't know how to handle this, it's on you. He's always had some sort of a solution for us or options.
Yeah, I, I got used to that. Okay, so what are our options? Cause he already has options to.
Right.
So you're still a three? Cause I'm a four, you're a four, and you're outvoting.
That's fine.
Alright, you're doing a very good job with that.
Thank you.
Identifies needs, obstacles, and suggests, suggests potential solutions. Again, kinda goes hand in hand with the previous one.
Yep. So four?
I'll still say three. So sometimes I feel. Like I want a stronger opinion on something. Instead of, so instead of it's up to the board, sometimes I want. It's always up to us, but sometimes I want like more of a pushback or a stronger opinion of what he's thinking. Cause I, I think sometimes you ride the fine line between, you know, trying to work with us and have an opinion.
Kinda is a fine line though.
But sometimes I just want the opinion, like you guys are idiots if you do this, right? I've never heard that. And that might be good sometimes, cause I think occasionally we've probably made not so great decisions, but.
Okay.
I, I feel like he has done that without the idiots.
Yeah, that's, you know, an extreme example.
I do feel like he has warned us and, you know, you know, somehow take A or B decision. Still, he says it's up to you, but.
Ultimately, it is up to us.
Yeah.
He knows that and I think you try to be respectful of that.
Yeah.
And knows the role he's in. Yes, he is the town administrator, but he is working for us in that capacity. And it ultimately is on us for the decision and.
But we're relying on him a lot for his expertise and knowledge and, you know.
But have you ever said, sat there and said, be frank with me and tell me the truth? What do you feel?
I don't think, maybe not. Have I? Probably not.
Then how can you hold him accountable for something that you didn't?
Well, now I'm mentioning it.
You didn't solicit from him and say, hey, Jim, I don't wanna, don't butter this up for me, I want it.
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
So what do you think? He's a three.
I'm a four.
You're a four. I would say four also. Before Rich goes down to a two.
No.
Alright. Proactively seeks methods to improve efficiency. He's always doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the phones, the new phones.
The phones, you know, different programs for increasing efficiency around here. He's done a lot.
Yeah, and in extreme situations of panic, he, he takes, uh, control, you know, that extra work. So things don't go kaput, you know what I'm trying to say? He's a hands-on when things are bad, not only for. Yeah, that's right, the phones and everything makes efficiency, but you know, you could have a complete chaos and say, oh, it was so bad and not do anything. He just takes everything and controls the situation.
It's gonna be the longest eval ever. So, how do you feel?
Cuatro.
Yeah, fours, yeah.
So four?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, welcomes new challenges, is self-starter, and adaptable to new situations.
Five. Four.
So welcomes new challenges, is a self-starter, and is adaptable to new situations. So four?
Yep.
Five?
Five.
Why do you say a five?
Because everything he gets is a new challenge. So again, like the construction on School Street, how many different issues arised with that, right? And he's handled, had to handle all of those. I think he's up for things like changing IT companies is not an easy thing to deal with, the phone system isn't an easy, you know, that's a big thing to tackle. And he could've just said, nah, that's fine, these phones are fine, right? We don't need to do that. You know, but that's something he took on and did a good job with.
You're not gonna ask me why I give you a four?
Oh, no.
Do you want him to?
Why, why'd you give him a four?
Oh, because, you know, to me, like for example, the, the project over there on School Street, he could have come to us and say, hey, guys, we need a. Somebody in charge of this to report to us, but he did, took control of it, he, he took it on himself.
Yeah, he's been out there for a while.
Exceeds expectations, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're, you're a five, you're a four, and I'm a five, cause I think you're doing an outstanding job in that section.
Thank you.
There we go. Makes well reasoned, timely decisions. Makes well-reasoned, timely decisions which have positive results.
Four, five?
There's no four or five. Make a decision.
What do you think, Derek? Well reasoned.
Well, I.
You are timely decision, I think you can have a.
I, I would give him a five, but I'm gonna stay on four because we haven't had a dramatic situation where he really had to, you know, go through this. He's done very well, take, he has very well taken good, good decisions and, you know. What I'm trying to say is we haven't been in a crisis where he had to work on it, this exercise. So far, he's been exceeding the expectations with little things here, here, and there. That's why I stayed on a four instead of a five.
Okay.
Yeah, a four, a four.
A four?
I still kinda lean toward a five. I mean, he, like, I got the email, so earlier, last year, he would've come to us and said, you know, "Should we open up a cooling center?" Now he just doesn't. Like, he watches the weather, and today I got an email. Right? He's just like able to, in that regard, anticipate what's gonna come up and take appropriate action. And it is, what is it? It has positive results.
So what are you saying?
Well, I, I don't, I don't norm, I didn't do the cooling center. I don't wanna take credit for that.
Oh, you didn't?
I initiated the cooling center.
Okay.
When I first started and, and kind of, you know, transitioned that over to Jimmy McKeon, who's, who's really taken the lead on that.
Alright.
So you're giving Jimmy a five?
I'll give Jimmy a five and Jim a four then.
Alright, so.
Yeah, I think exceeds expectations then, yeah.
What do you give him? Four?
Yes.
Okay, so four. Alright.
And you get a good mark for giving appropriate.
Recognition.
Recognition, yeah.
Seeks and uses available resources required to complete tasks.
Exceeds expectations.
Four?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll go with four.
Seeks as advice as needed.
Exceeds the, my expectations.
I don't, I don't know. Have you ever asked for advice?
He has.
Oh, yeah, he does all the time.
Does he?
He doesn't ask advice from you?
I don't know. Do you?
Well, I, you know.
Did I just empty a can of worms?
No. Kind of getting, you know, your feedback, what, you know, your, your, your input.
Alright, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give him a four.
Yeah, he said four.
What? Four? Alright. So any comments on this? For the initiative, creativity, and problem solving?
Well, I think he has good initiative and, you know, a lot of the time that goes hand to hand with creativity because you can't have one without the other one. So it's hard when I'm thinking in Spanish.
They'll say it in Spanish and then we'll translate it.
Yeah, talking the goof. Me as a creator, I, I've seen people, when you said, "You know what? Make a line from here to there," and they just draw the line. There's another guy, and he does a little at the end, and I say, "Why did you do that?" "Well, it looks much nicer." That's it. He has a lot of initiative on things that we didn't ask for. He just comes up with them.
I'm just asking for comments.
That's my comment.
So great initiative?
Yeah. Very creative and solve problem. I'm sorry, I'm so bad for this. That's why at the beginning, I just said, "I give you five stars." Two thumbs up.
A great initiative and problem solving.
Oh my God, look at all the questions on that.
We're just half of it.
Yikes. We have to continue on the next meeting.
We're gonna have to table this.
And anything else? Did you have any comments, Rich?
No.
Works well with others?
Yeah.
Shares the ball?
Shares the ball.
Good in the sandbox?
I think.
Was that?
Good in the sandbox?
Yeah.
Yeah, something about problem solving is good, good problem solving.
He said great initiative and problem solving.
Yeah. Good problem solving skill.
Keep up the good work. Cooperation, teamwork, and leadership. Now, there's a lot of them in this one, so, and we're only halfway done.
Do we wanna continue this?
Yeah, we gotta do his email.
Okay.
So does not let personal interests interfere in achieving overall team goals.
He's pretty good at it. I give him a four.
I'll go with a four. I don't know what outstanding means in that context, so.
So we'll go with a four. Okay, observes established channels of communication. I would say he's a five in that because he's always notifying us, keeping us informed. If there's an issue with Highway Department, he lets Highway Department know. If there's an issue with police, he lets the chief know.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like the sign. Five for me.
Yeah, that's fine, five.
So five. Collaborates with others to accomplish tasks and objectives. Works with CMR PC, all the boards.
Yeah.
Goes above, above and beyond to, you know, go to other meetings.
Yeah. Five.
Yeah, cable guy, you know, the internet guys, the phone guys.
So what do you put in that?
Five.
Five.
Five, five, five. So five. Okay, interacts well with own department and other town staff, has earned respect of coworkers.
If I'm a coworker, I'll say a four.
Yeah, it's hard to say. I guess we're coworkers, yeah. Four.
Four?
Okay.
Okay, maintains and enthusiastic and cooperative attitude. Five.
Yeah, I, I, at some point, I admire him. He, so, we've been in situations where I've, I've been very, very pissed off and he's so calm down. He has a good skin. Cause if he doesn't get mad, he's, he's just very calm.
He's a thick skin, you mean?
Yeah, thick skin.
Okay, I said it in Spanish, just like the translation. But you got my point. So I give him a four.
A four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would say five on that, so you're a five?
Enthusiastic, five.
So four? Five.
I said four, but you guys said five, it's a five.
It's a five. Maintains employee morale. I don't care, and how's he doing?
How's your morale?
Right now? On my birthday.
She wants to go home on her birthday, that's.
Good. Excellent.
So four?
What are you feeling? People are ecstatic, but they're happy.
I think it's a four.
Four?
I mean, it's, you've been here for two or three years already.
So it'll be three years in March.
Yeah, and I haven't heard anybody like really saying, "We should kick you out."
So perceived as an excellent role model by supervisors, coworkers, and subordinates.
It wouldn't be like you did. Good model.
Yeah, four?
Four? Okay. Presents themselves as a resource to newer employees.
Very well, five.
He is the resource.
Yeah.
New employees is usually direct them to where they need to go and who to see and.
I would say four. Five.
Okay. Number four? Does that? Okay, any comments? Where's your all your creativity?
It wasn't the, before, um, square, the creativity. I believe he's a good teamwork and leadership incorporates, you know, in any situation.
Good teamwork and leadership skills. Continue to be exceptional role model?
Sounds good.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll leave two more.
Next one's short.
Okay. Two more to go. Okay, dependability and attendance.
That's a five for me.
Punctual and reliable attendance within established working hours in department expectations. Always on time, right? He's always here, even when he's not supposed to be here, he's here.
Well, right, within established working hours, I would say he's successful. He's always here. If it just said reliable attendance alone, I would say five because he shows up to like the parade, he shows up to the
Everything.
tree lighting. So the, the question, if you take it literally, he's, I don't know, how do you?
So punctual and reliable attendance within established working hours in department expect, expectations.
I, okay, I give him an A. What does that translate to?
Five.
Okay.
What do you say?
Five.
I would say a five. You're always here, you're always doing it, and then when you're not here, you let us know. And you have very good reason. Demonstrates a responsible approach to time away from work. A two.
Yeah? I think it lasted. I don't even know how to.
Demonstrates a responsible approach to time away from work.
Well, he demonstrates, he's responsible. It's a five.
I'd say four.
Four. Okay. Time off requests are made in a timely manner using proper methods.
Five.
Four.
Four.
If you're gonna give him a five, give him a five. Don't do it because.
I don't know what five means. Like, he does, he does that thing, so. Is it outstanding when you do what you do?
Anytime he does it, he lets us know.
Yeah.
He's does it in a timely manner. He doesn't drop it with on us like, "Hey, by the way, I'm taking tomorrow off." When we need him. You know, so he's doing it. Doing a good job with it.
He's doing it in writing, he's doing it verbally and many times. With time, with plenty of time in advance.
Alright, I could give him a five then.
Five?
If I look at it as an A, B, C, D, or F, he'd get an A.
I would be wanting to look at it. Alright.
I'll give him an A.
Five.
Alright.
Five?
Maybe that's how, I have to get off of these words here, cause they're like.
So any comments?
Above and beyond attendance.
Okay, good.
Why don't you do all the comments?
I'm having trouble with the comments.
Did you have any comments? Or is that good?
That's good, you don't.
Alright. Now, as a supervisor. So supervisory and staff development encourages professional development and teamwork within departments.
That's a, exceeds the expectations.
Yeah, four.
Four? Fair, open-minded, and accessible.
Five.
That's a five.
Five? Motivates employees develop, to develop skills.
It's a four.
Four, sure, I'll do that.
A four.
Encourages staff participation in decision-making.
That's a B or a four.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Four?
Four.
Okay. Able to delegate appropriately.
Yeah, he just put an example, the cooling center. Initiated, and then he passed it.
Four?
Four.
Four? Effectively deals with personal issues as they arise, or personnel issues, not personal issues. Personnel issues as they arise.
Yeah, I, I did mention it once or twice tonight. I think it's a four.
I would probably go with five.
I'd go with a five on that.
You guys beat me up.
He's always on top of.
Yeah, he does a great job with that. Any comments? See what happens when you get the three of us together?
Yeah.
Trying to brainstorm on your behalf?
I think he does a very good job supervising, you know, and encouraging, um, the staff to work as a teammate. So how much was that in an hour?
Is that it?
So good job supervising and encouraging staff to work as a team. Did you have any comments?
No, that sounds good.
Save that. Next is employee comments. And goals. Okay. So overall, you've been doing an outstanding job. Continue to do a good job. We haven't seen anything that you need improvement on. You're on the right path. You're seeking knowledge to advance yourself within your career and to help with the town. And overall, I would say you're doing an outstanding job in your position. I would say that you're we're very impressed with where you've been and where you've gone to now. And you're I have no disappointments or concerns. And I think you've gained our trust over the years working here and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Thank you everybody.
Do you guys have any comments?
I would say outstanding, proactive in your position. You do a great job.
Thank you.
I gave my comments at the beginning. Five stars, two thumbs up.
Do you have any questions or comments or concerns, anything that we would like to ask to clarify on?
No, I do not, and again, it's a privilege and an honor to work with the board and with all the staff here in town and the residents, and I love the job.
God bless you, James.
Absolutely. And I will print this up. Don't forget it. I think it's printing.
So do you have goals for this fiscal year?
I do, I do. And, you know, some of them are ones that, you know, I'd like to see us continue to address some of the issues that were identified in our financial management review from the Department of Revenue. We've tackled about five of them so far, out of the thirteen, I think, or so they're there. So we've already made significant progress in addressing some of those. I'd like to continue to address some of those, continuing to work on, you know, improvements of, you know, within the buildings and to protect our assets and to continue to, you know, move forward all these grants that we're gonna get and continue to work.
Printed up on that.
And continue to work towards, you know, making sure that all of our our budgets are in line. My prediction is that fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven are gonna be very tough for the state and for local, the local towns, cities and towns across the Commonwealth, and we have to be vigilant and prepare for that. And, you know, continue to look to find ways to be more efficient, more effective, and to do more with less money.
Okay.
So we should get his goals and everything that he has to have, and we sign it.
No signing?
You gotta sign it. Yeah, you're the chair, so you're the overall supervisor.
I can print them up for the next meeting for you guys, and then I can just attach them to the to the thing next, next thing.
Don't lose this.
Thank you, I won't.
It's our only copy. So.
We're not doing mine in open meeting, thank you.
No. You know something? I'm just gonna type it in there, because everything else is typed. So I'll just do that page, we can continue on and I'll just type.
And just if I, if I may for the board, you know, you know, I talked to the chair about this, and I know we didn't do this last year, but, you know, we still have a couple departments that are, you know, looking to get theirs done, and I understand that there's, you know, that there's, you know, a lot of work that's out there for departments that need to finish up for the fiscal year and different things like that, so I just wanted to get this on the agenda so that all three individuals can comment on this. I certainly don't want, you know, other staff to feel that this is gonna happen for everybody. You know, this is just, this is just a special thing because I work for three board members that are, you know, it's a public thing.
Oh, one R, right?
Yes. F E R E R.
I always wanna add two R's. If you guys wanna continue, I'm just typing in the top page.
Fifteen?
So fifteen. We acknowledge of the resignation of Lisa Boucher as a Warren Parks and Recreational Commissioner effective July fifteen, twenty twenty-fourth.
We don't need a motion for that.
Nope.
The position is posted on the website, we are taking, you know, solicitations for people, anybody that's interested in serving on the Parks and Recs Commission. You can send their letter of interest and we can get it on an agenda.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna, I wanna take the opportunity to thank Lisa for many years of working there and the great job that Parks has done through the years. Number sixteen, discussion and acceptance of the request for Don Makowski Senior Citizen Property Tax Work of Abatement for Fiscal Year Twenty-Five, anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, on this, on this matter, I did talk to Mr. Makowski, he does have an interest. I know that we were looking at some different departments.
Senior Center wants him.
Senior Center, okay. So I think we could place him at the Senior Center. And we can set up the, you know, the parameters for him to start. And this is for, when will this be?
December.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
So just to confirm, he does not get a stipend on the Board of Health?
He does get a stipend on the Board of Health.
Okay, it says cannot be compensated employee of the town during the fiscal year.
Well, then, I don't think he would be eligible then.
Yeah.
Okay, I will let him know.
All right, thank you.
What does it start?
March twenty twenty-two fourteen.
No, start of the evaluation, it's starting period rate of the evaluation.
There was start date of the employment.
Is that what you've been putting in?
March fourteen twenty-two.
All right, seventeen. You want me to read warrants and bills, David?
Yes, please.
Okay.
F D R.
Number seventeen, warrants and bills.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-four warrant, number eighty-eight vendor, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred, five dollars and sixty cents.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richai Harker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion passes.
Make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-five warrants, PR zero-two, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. APO three, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars and seventy cents. PRO one, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
PO three is.
PR O three, not one.
Line C? It's PRO three.
PRO three, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. APO four, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents. PRO four, sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents. APO five, hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richai Harker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion passes.
Make a motion to pay the following bills, the MMA, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, CMRPC, fifteen hundred, seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. Entree, twenty-five hundred, ninety-six dollars and ten cents. SHI International, twelve thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and nineteen cents. Is that Mass Core?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Mass Core, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, Modern Pest, hundred and eight dollars, Stericycle, hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, Comcast Business, hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Verizon, six dollars and twenty cents, WP Mason, two ninety-nine, ninety-four, Kelco, hundred and sixteen dollars, Rico, hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents, National Bridge, sixty-seven, seventy-four. Marlin Leasing, eleven hundred, seven dollars and twenty-three cents, American Tower, twenty-two hundred, eighty-eight dollars, SBA, seventeen hundred, fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, Camden Communications, fifteen hundred dollars.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richai Harker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion passes. Minutes, review and possible. There's no minutes for tonight. And we go back to Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you this evening is a new format. Another thing that I discussed at the start of the new fiscal year is that my monthly reports, along with my weekly reports as we continue to meet, meet weekly. But the monthly reports are gonna be in this memo style, okay? And will have a broken down bullet points between multiple departments that I have interacted with for the month. So this report reflects the month of July and the interactions and significant milestones that were interacted with, with the various departments. So it's almost like a, you know, an analysis or a city stat of what's going on in, 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 in town departments. So you have the administration, the financial departments, police and fire, highway, building and planning, council on aging, health, parks and rec, things that I've been involved in or things that are, that have come up. Again, information that it can be communicated and sent to the board. This report will come out on a monthly basis. This report, it is my intention to have this report posted on the website to also inform the residents of the town, you know, what's going on in certain departments. And they can look up on some of the milestones and information within the department.
Very good.
Looks good, Jim, thank you very much.
Along with this, I am working with our financial team to put together a, a report. Again, it's, my goal is to get it for a monthly report. It may be quarterly on the financial status of the town, financial condition of the town at that particular time. Revenue versus expenditures, I'd like to see you guys get a monthly report on that to see where we are and how we're progressing. As, you know, and as well as looking at, you know, giving you either last year's, last year's number as compared to this year's number and see where we are tracking and, and to try to keep an eye on trends, which are very important. And to see if we're falling short in any of our collections, that could signal to us that, you know, we're heading towards, you know, a downturn in, in the economy or something. So we're gonna look at, at trends from last year to this year, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side, and I'm gonna formulate that report. It's just pulling all that data together, and the financial team has been great, but we don't have an army here, as I always say. We have very limited staff, so I have to work with them and their timetables to get that information, get it put together. So we will get that out to you, that will be, my goal is to get that as a monthly report as well. So you'll have this once a month, and you'll have a financial report once a month, as well as my normal oral report that I would give you on the updates during the week.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question. Conservation Commission is about to go to two members.
It is posted.
It is posted, okay. According to the chair, if they don't have quorum, it falls on us. I don't know if you know if that's true or not, but I believe that probably is the case.
I'll have to look up the MGL, but I wouldn't doubt it.
But we really, that board has been short for a long time now, a long, long time, so.
Hard getting anybody to volunteer for anything now.
Yeah.
Nobody even wants to.
But that's really important.
Very important board.
Potential projects coming up that would need conservation, we have ongoing projects that need conservation. I see it all the time, she works hard.
Yeah.
Fielding stuff all the time, so it's an important board or commission.
Conservation, parks, assessors. Although I, I think there may be somebody that's gonna be submitting a letter of interest on the assessors, I don't know today, we ran into somebody today, I don't know if he's going to or not, but you know, there's a lot of vacancies on boards, you know, finance committee's still looking for somebody. Capital planning's still looking for a resident, so there's plenty of opportunities to participate and to volunteer in town, as well as work in town, too. We have quite a few available spots available.
So can we add that to the equation of the Community Development Blog Grant Program, how we evaluate? Because we're, we're lack of, you know, employees and board members, does that reflect into that?
No.
I don't think that's a rating.
I think it's gonna get to a point where, because we can't get people to volunteer for positions, we're gonna have to do a change in how we handle things and maybe start looking at municipal employees. Because the town, the volunteer system for a town is just not working these days. You know, you look at the fire departments, they can't work on volunteers anymore, they need full-time people. You know, we have to get the jobs done and having people that it just yeah, I'll do it on a weekend, or I'll do it a couple days here and there, it just doesn't work for a full-time operation such as a town. And it was great back fifty years ago. Times have changed, so.
I agree, I agree. You know, it's, it's very difficult. Today's economy, everybody's trying to, you know, survive, try to be better, try to raise a family or engage to get a family. Sometimes being volunteer doesn't work anymore. New business, I don't have any new business. Do we have any new business?
Nope.
No.
All business. Nothing?
Well, I'll, I don't know if, I don't know if it counts as all business or comments, but if you've noticed, some of the railroad ties are gone.
Yeah, half of them are gone.
Half, at least the part that shows, I noticed the part that's hidden by trees is still there. But I'll, you know, we remain optimistic and say that they'll get rid of all of those, so. And have you heard anything?
Todd, Representative Smola did reach out to me and call me and reiterated again that he's made numerous calls to CSX and that he's made numerous calls to CSX, and I think that they're responding.
Yeah, it looks like it, so...
Didn't somebody just tell us that they were coming out and to remove a bunch of them? They were going to remove half.
Yeah.
Well, there definitely is. Somebody said that.
I mean, I don't know the numbers.
They've removed some of them already.
There's definitely, they're gone, some of them are gone, yeah. A good chunk, I'll say, even. But there's still a pile, so, yeah.
Sir?
Early ponder, President. At the last slide of the meeting, you said a decision had to be made to buy the Gold Star flag of the town by vote. We still have Gold Star families that live in town. It would be nice that they would be recognized for their loss.
We did discuss that, and the Veterans Agent was working on that for us.
What we were doing, she brought forth the Honor and Remember flag versus the Gold Star. Usually the Gold Stars are given to families, and they're smaller and they're put in their yard. But she wanted to do that, but because we have a fight, or I don't know if it's by law, a policy, a policy about what we comply. Next meeting, I have it on the agenda. I did have it on this one, but this agenda got so long that I took a backup with Mr. Farrar's suggestion to do it at the next meeting.
So we handle it, Joe. We didn't forget.
Okay. No more old business correspondence?
None.
None.
Not me. Comments and concerns? Hey, I have a comment. It kind of leaves you on the side. Remember when we had a dog here in Good Day? Remember that, last dog here?
Uh-huh, yeah.
On East Street?
Yeah.
I recently was biking that way, and I saw no change or anything. So they didn't do anything that we...
Oh, they were going to put up like a gate and stuff, right?
So that didn't happen. Just my comment.
Can you, okay, can you look into what we had?
For East Street or Maple Street? The last one was Maple.
It was the one on East, though.
East, word, yeah.
East Street, okay.
Did Tammy get bit?
Yeah.
Because you recused yourself.
So I will figure that out and have it for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm just afraid if something else happens and they haven't done it...
Yeah. Well, I mean, we did, I'd have to, we have to look at that.
Yeah, look at what...
Can you email it out to us, and then we can talk about it in the next meeting? Yeah.
And you want it on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Just through, we need to follow up, because if something happens and we didn't say it, we just forgot about it, it doesn't look good.
Well, plus if we set conditions and never follow up on that, then it's like, it's toothless.
Yeah. Then my other comment is... I know I've been saying this for many years, but, you know, painting the roads. I really would like Highway to come up with a line budget. Because it, I don't know, I've been...
People have been complaining on Facebook about it.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, too, you know?
They, it's causing people to go into other lanes and get into their lane and push them off to the side. So it's becoming a danger.
And I don't know if you guys ever watch, well, I watch a lot of car or motorcycle videos in Europe, and they paint so well the roads. It's amazing.
In Europe?
In Europe.
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 The old continent. You know?
They have paint that actually stays on it, too.
Well, it's a special paint, you know? It's just like that new road in Westbrookville going to North Brookfield. It looks so nice.
Oh, '67?
Yeah. It looks so beautiful, and it makes you feel safer. So, just a comment, but I, you know, we, the United States is supposed to be the most powerful country in the world. Let's show off. So I know it's hard with the budget, but it doesn't hurt.
It's traffic safety.
Yeah.
You can ask Highway to... Because we've been asking about this for a long time.
Yeah, let's get the best, you know? The worst thing, it doesn't happen, but I want to push for it. I really want to have people, when they come into water, like, wow, what happened here? You know, it's so nice.
And the lines don't look like a dark person painted?
Yeah, yeah.
Any comments or concerns in the public? Yes, sir?
Well, at one time I worked with Jim for almost a year. I'd like to say that he has more than just the working knowledge of all the boards, commissions and departments. And it's not only the people that are in the town. Somebody, a resident of another town comes in, his office is open, and he's available to discuss issues of that. He has extremely well working knowledge of the town. Anyway, ninety-nine percent of the town.
Thank you.
You can find him just about every day, someplace in the town or the town hall.
We're going to get him a P.O. box here.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else, next meeting?
I left that blank for a reason. We have CMRPC coming on the 22nd. Do you want a meeting on the 15th? We have a couple...
We obviously can't go a month without meeting, because then we end up with an agenda like this.
We're also going to have Tecton at some point. They're going to have their presentation ready, as well as Weston and Sampson, too.
So we can either do the 15th and not the 22nd, or the 15th and the 22nd?
Well, what about the next, the next meeting will be the 15th?
Well, we could do the 22nd or the 29th with them. So why don't we do the 15th and then move the other one to the 29th? And we'll do the 15th and the 29th.
Sure, okay.
So Wright's Mill update would be on the 29th?
Okay, I can let him know.
Okay, that works. Next meeting's the 15th.
Okay, so no meeting on the 8th. No meeting...
Oh, I'm sorry. On the 22nd, CMRPC is, was scheduled to do the ADA assessment. So our ADA plan is done, and they were going to come and make a presentation on the ADA plan. So they are booked for the 22nd.
So we have to have a meeting on the 22nd?
Well, can we move them to the 29th?
I could ask.
Okay.
Or we could just have two meetings in a row.
Well, no, I think we're looking to not do anything on the 29th.
Not do anything on the 22nd?
22nd.
Okay.
Okay, so for, well, what we know now is no meeting on the 8th and a meeting on the 15th.
Correct.
Right.
And then we'll see how it goes after that, right?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richie Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis. We're out...